Walked into Dope. Uh, my brother Kevin Dorsey, uh, Commissioner Kevin Dorsey. Now, uh, before, before we get started, uh, uh, we're doing our solidarity, uh, shout out. We shout out, uh, groups that are doing things in the community. You have any groups that you'd like to shout out?
Anybody who's doing anything to help mankind, womankind, uh, for the quality of life for the people. So, I mean, it's a lot of people unseen, seen heroes out there. Big shout out to all the mothers.
Oh, yeah, mothers.
That's doing, raising their kids the right way.
Say that again. That's right.
Are trying to raise them. How about that?
Yeah.
That's a task. Happy Mother's Day.
All right. Now, I got a long list of, uh, what's your accomplishments and things like that? And I don't want to bore the people with that.
No.
Uh, I just, I, I just would like to say, you know, I appreciate Commissioner Dorsey. Uh, I called him this week and asked him to come down. Uh, everybody that follows the show, they know me. I'm a straight shooter and, and I call you to the car.
Mm-hmm.
And I invite all politicians, but I don't, if you don't come down before the election, don't come down here during the election. Uh, look at my bag here, Tom. Uh, the black one with the orange flag. Uh, you know, but, uh, Kevin Dorsey is, is a, is a product of Dope in Alabama. You know, he's born and raised here. Uh, he's a single parent, you're a single parent, correct?
No, man.
Huh?
Married, two twins.
Oh, I got some.
Two thirteen-year-olds.
Okay, I got that, but, 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 my, my, my research team said you was a single parent. I'm not just, you know.
That's an old boy.
Okay, that's old boy, okay.
Old boy.
Cause I, cause I know about you, I know about your twins, you know.
Right.
I know you, you, you're big with your twins, you know, uh.
You're dropping one or more, you know, in the barber shop. I'm running a little behind.
Oh, okay. All right, well, you know, I don't want to bore people with all this other stuff. I just, you know, I do want to show my appreciation for you answering the call. Uh, because you have helped my church out when we had issues. Uh, you know, you answered the call on that as well. So, I, I want, I want people to understand that, uh, something you said to me, uh, I say to other people. That our elected officials work for us.
Right.
They represent us. So, if you have a complaint, approach them, be respectful.
Right.
Don't just, don't just come crazy. You know, if you've got a legitimate gripe and you want some answers, be respectful. That, that's what they're there for. They're not, uh, they're, they're not here to be abused, but they're here to represent our needs. And if you don't voice your needs, you can't complain about it. So, uh, you know, I was reading some things, uh, that you were working on, you know, uh, and one thing I wanted to ask you about was the affordable, uh, housing implementation, uh, program. Uh, I know you were working on that last year.
Correct.
Uh, what's, what's the status of that?
First, I want to, I want to thank you for the invite, uh, I commend you for, you know, what you're doing, what you're trying to do, uh, your mission, your vision, your goal. Uh, need more brothers like yourself, you know, to get the word out to the people, uh, that support the people. Uh, and you made mention of the, uh, affordable housing. Right now, we have a fourteen million dollar project going on on Newton. Right now, uh, we just have a walk through this past week. I was kind of tied up with some, uh, business, uh, cause actually I just got back in town Monday from Mobile from CMO. Uh, uh, meeting with councilmen and mayors all around the state of Alabama down in Mobile, uh, some seminars and whatnot. But that's a project, it's senior housing. Uh, I think it falls under the same, uh, umbrella as the affordable housing. Uh, so it's gonna be, uh, it's, it's, it's gonna be pretty good. That's, that's something I'm big on working on now. Uh, same time trying to get people to buy in to our community, you know, uh. So, uh, if anybody out there who wants to make a great investment, uh, get with me. Uh, it's wide open. We have a lot of, you know, uh, rain or whatnot, it was raining outside.
You got here just to tell you, bored with you.
Yeah.
Bored with you.
Mm-hmm.
Yep, you know, and, uh, you know, like I said, I, I jumped right in there with you on that. So, that's gonna be for, for seniors.
Yeah, senior housing over on Newton, on Newton, I'm sorry, the old Howard School building.
Yeah, I see, I'm working on it. Yeah. I, uh, you know, and I commend you because, uh, people may not realize you faced a lot of opposition.
I did.
Uh, with that last year, you know, but you, I see you held fast to it, brother.
You're right.
So, you know, um, you know, we give politicians a hard time.
Right.
Uh, and, and that's our job. That's our job. You know, it's the same way, we have to give them accolades when they fight for us. You know, you have a politician that puts his reputation and his, his name on the line, or her name, you need to stand up for them and with them. You know, um, I, I kind of jumped the gun a little bit. Can you just tell us the, the roles and the responsibility of City Commissioner for those that don't know?
Well, the role is, is simple. I mean, you get elected, you know, by the people, so you have to serve the people. Pretty much to keep them up afloat, what's going on in the community. A lot of times, you know, people get, you know, caught up in the day-to-day operations far of work, take care of their family and whatnot. So, they may miss the five o'clock news, the ten o'clock news. Of course, they're not gonna make the twelve o'clock news, so therefore, for me to have the information, also let them know as far as what resources and whatnot that are available in the city, uh, what services that, that you, as a taxpayer, like you made mention earlier, that you, that you pay for, that you get. Um, pretty much just to be informed and inform the people, uh, throughout the wire grab.
What power does the City Commissioner have? What power does the City Commissioner have?
Uh, power, just as much power as the citizen. I mean, you have just as much power, you're a taxpayer. So, a taxpayer, I mean, you, you pay, you pay the bills. So, police, fire, uh, planning director, legal service director, all the department head, city manager, you pay their salaries, cause you're a taxpayer.
Right. So, again, um, the point is, if you don't engage, don't get met.
Exactly.
Uh, cause Antoine asked about what power does it have? He rep, this, this man represents District One in Dope in Alabama. So, that project is in District One or not?
It's in District One. We have several projects.
Okay. So, what else, so, 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 so what needs are you meeting for District One? And what needs do you see that still need to be met?
Well, right now in our community, I think there's a big cry for it on social, social, um, especially in my district, uh, you know, a lot of things, and that, that was part of my platform I ran, you know, to build the people's mind, build their family and their finance. I mean, that changes things, that changes the whole dynamics of families when you focus on those three. I mean, you can jump out there with a truckload, a bookshelf, or, uh, different problems, the things you trying to solve and whatnot. And, and a lot of these things, you know, you may not, you, you won't, you won't ever end them, but you can, you can alleviate them, you can slow them down. You know, I just got off the phone with, uh, Mr. Christopher Doggett doing dignity for dads over at McRae Homes. He wants me to join up and partner up, so you'll see me put some things like that this week about far as fathers in the home, the absence of fathers, how much, what kind of effect that has on families, you know, now from kids and whatnot. You know, with myself, I came from a single parent home, so I, I definitely know firsthand, you know, the effect that it has. But pretty much the social, social, um, thing that we have going on. And just those three categories, you know, I'm speaking at Gerard Middle School this Monday, uh, well, Monday, yeah, speak, Monday, at Gerard at eight o'clock to some kids, so that's some things that I'll be covering. Actually, I've been talking about finding the lyrics and kind of giving it away. Uh, I'm going to the prison, I speak at the prison on Wednesday at Eastland in, uh, Clive, Alabama. So, I mean, it's just pretty much, uh, it's, it's gonna take more, more than just me. It's gonna take boots on the ground, uh, it's gonna take more than just talking about it. You know, like, like you said, I'm gonna do it. You know, people know who I am, they know how to find me, you know, so it's, it's no secret.
I hear you're involved in a lot of stuff. What's your agenda, or what's your vision for District One?
Just pretty much to empower the people, empower the people, you know, to, you know, just tell them, let, let them know that, you know, there, there is a light at the end of the tunnel, and you can reach it. Uh, there's nothing out of reach, uh, you know, uh, what God asks me, it's, it's, it's for you. You, you can do the same thing I do. I mean, that's nothing new in the sun. I, I don't have any kind of different, imagine one that I'm, I'm carrying around, I'm waving or whatnot. I mean, I just work, you know, hard work until it does pay off. I mean, uh, just to, just to educate, like I said, educate the people, build, you know, build their minds, build their family, and, and help build their finance. I mean, that right there, that'd get anybody out to hold. That works for business, that works for the community.
All right. You're a busy man. You got more jobs than, uh, than one of the Henleys.
Busy. I don't have a job, I'm busy.
And that's, and that's good. Uh, you know, I'm sitting here and I'm listening to you, and I think what we have to do, Antoine, is add him to our solidarity list. Because, uh, again, he is a man that's doing work in his, in his community, uh, outside of his job description, uh, as a father and as a parent. So, uh, we owe it to him to help support, uh, his endeavors as well. So, uh, those of you in District One, you know, reach out to, uh, Commissioner Dorsey. Reach out to him, he's very accessible. Uh, every time I've called him, he's answered the phone, and he's answered the call, cause like, like I said, I called him this week and asked him to be on the show, this week, and he didn't hesitate. So, when you have politicians that don't want to talk to the people, don't, uh.
Surrender flag.
Yeah, right there. I can't, I can't, I can't. Uh, Antoine, you have a question for him? Go ahead.
Yeah, I, I was just curious about what topics do you find that people are least educated about?
Uh, pretty much the department head, understanding how the city operates.
Right.
You know what I'm saying, just the different functions of the city. You know, we are, we're in the city manager government, we have a city manager, we have City Commissioners, you know, one mayor, understanding the whole process, the voting process, um, just knowing like the different needs. If you have a problem with, with, with garbage, who you call. Uh, like, believe it or not, any issue you have in City Government, you just call six one five thirty-one eleven.
Tell that number, tell that number again.
Six one five three one one one. I mean, during the week, that's, that's through, uh, business operating all Monday through Friday. Uh, just things of that nature, and those are the things that I talk about in my forum. Actually, uh, I think I'm having a forum this Thursday, but it should be on my Facebook page, cause I, I let, I keep my people informed. Uh, that, that, that's about it, just let them know what's, what the city offer, you know, what city Dope offers. Uh, you can go to City Center, you, you're a taxpayer. You can go anywhere in the City Center, any floor, any office, city, any chair. You can ask for the book, what did we make last month? What is, uh, wage math, what we doing on our wages? Any question you got, you can ask. You're a taxpayer. You don't have to be afraid, because at the end of the day, it's, it's your dollars being spent.
Now, you, um, when, when, uh, when are the city council meetings? So, the people can be, uh, yeah.
City commission meetings, yeah.
Uh, it's a commission meeting, so, uh, people can come out.
We meet at the first of the month and the first and the third Tuesday at ten o'clock AM.
Where at?
Uh, Dope City Center. But all this information, all this information can be found on dopein.org.
That's right.
We have City Web site, we have Facebook page.
Yep.
I mean, you know, Dope, Dope is not a metropolitan city, so it's not hard to, to get information. We can, we can take our walk right now, be at the City Center like in six minutes. I mean, from where we at right now. So, I mean, it's not, it's, it's not that complicated. You know, a lot of the things that, you know, people put out there, it's just the willing, that the person has the will and desire to do. That's, that's, that's the most thing, you know.
Right, and again, you listen to Kevin Dorsey, Commissioner Kevin Dorsey, uh, District One, right here in Dope in Alabama. You know, uh, I don't believe in asking one man about another man's issues, but I'm gonna ask you this. I'm gonna extend this, uh, invitation live on the air to your, to your other councils, uh, commissioners. You know, uh, this forum is open for everyone. Uh, and if you don't come down here before election, don't come down here during the election. And I'll put that out there. Uh, Kevin Dorsey, you have an open invitation. This is not the end of the interview, but I, I'm letting it be known that you have an open invitation.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, if you have issues, if you have things going on, you're trying to get support, uh, to get people to come down and support, uh, an initiative or anything, you have an open invite to this show.
Right.
Okay, now, uh, I'm gonna reach out to the other commissioners, as well as the mayor and people on the police department, because we have to open this dialogue to get things fixed. We can't just talk at each other. We have to sit down like civilized people and hash out some things. Uh, cause if I have grievances, I'm gonna come to you or go to, to the police commissioner or, 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 or whoever it needs to be.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so, I am extending that to all, uh, all politicians and, uh, elected officials. Uh, and like I said, whenever they do come down, uh, the fact that you didn't see a robbery to come down here on a Saturday afternoon and talk to your constituency, uh, you have an open invitation to always come down and, uh, promote anything you have going on, uh, with yourself.
Thank you.
That's gonna happen to you.
Yes, sir. Appreciate that.
Yeah, again, we, you know, we're here to help, uh, help solve problems, not create them.
Right.
You know, uh, cause I'm telling you, we hard on politicians, we hard on the system, a- as well we should be. Because again, you, you're, you're elected to represent the people of District One.
Exactly.
So, uh, they should have the ability to question you, and they should also have the ability to support you when you're fighting for, for the things that are going on. So, if you have issues in District One and you need to get them addressed, you know, you need to talk to Kevin Dorsey about them and see what, if anything, can be done, where it might already be in the works, or you need to take your behind down there to the commission meeting on the first, the first, the third.
First of the month, yeah.
First of the month, yeah. And, um, right at the Civic Center, to see what's going on. Um, what, um, what's the most challenging areas to enact, uh, positive change? Cause I know the city council, I think it's only you and Janaski.
It's, it's, it's pretty much, what's, what's been challenging, you know, this is my second term. Uh, it's, it's pretty much just the ignorant. The ignorant, you know, what people don't know, and I'm using the terms of that, you know.
Right.
What people don't know. I mean, cause a lot of times, you know, that's just like, for example, you know, things happen in our community. You know, first thing that I get, no matter what department it's with and who is with, is, you know, I wasn't there, I don't have all the facts, and I'm not gonna make any of the something. So, therefore, I'm not gonna jump out there talking about it, but I'm gonna give them a chance for, and, you know, when I was a young commissioner, first coming in, I'm jumping out, combative and whatnot, radical, but it doesn't take all that to do business. You know what I'm saying? I mean, customer service is not, customer service is not being radical. And I think some people miss that right there. I mean, you can get more accomplished, you know what I'm saying, just being able to, to, to compromise, improvise and whatnot, and talk to a person for a reasonable conversation. You know what I'm saying? So, that, that's things that I, that I've seen that's been challenges, you know, just kind of pretty much, there's a lot of people kind of in, in conditional way to, to think that, you know, in that seat, I'm supposed to holler, I'm supposed to be like, I told them this and that, it doesn't happen like that. There's, there's, there's been more money in District One in the history of Dope since I've been in office.
Okay, well, now, since you said that, now, when you first started, up till now, is there a big, what, what, what differences do you see?
Well, from when I started, cause I, I didn't, this wasn't my, this wasn't like no lifelong plan for me, no lifelong goal. I wanted to go to the NFL when I came out of high school. I played ball, defensive end, went to the, uh, Georgia Military, went on, took a later Detroit University, so that wasn't my plan. You know, I just came back home and I just was looking one day like, man, I could do better than that, and I just ran. You know, I said, how do you run? And I ran and bam, whoo, there it is, you know. Uh, but I mean, it's just like different things, just pretty much informing the people, letting people know I have meetings, I'm open. I mean, I'm an open door, you know, I'm, I'm cool in the day. You know, I just, I have my own talk show, I just got my own talk show. I, I have a talk show every Saturday morning from nine to eleven, so I came with you, that's a double duty today. You know, but, uh, once again, I'm, I'm for the people, so therefore, I don't have anything to hide, so therefore, uh, a person who got something to hide, they, they running for something.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm here. I mean, you can't, what, what you gonna ask me that I, that I'm ashamed of? I mean, you can go out and get in my car, I don't have anything illegal in my car, I'm following you home, I mean, it's, I'm legit. So, it's like, I'm not running from anything. I'm living upright, just trying to take care of my family and, and, and figure out the rest, you know. Had it come, you know, raising kids, I mean, nobody has a real true workbook on raising kids, how, what they gonna do.
Say that again, brother.
Right or left.
That's right. Uh, you know, I, I, I commend you. Uh, this is something that we talk about all the time. You know, people always ask how they can get involved. You had no aspirations to be a politician, but you saw a need in your community and decided to get involved. It's that, it's that simple. It's that, it's that simple. It's that simple. If you don't sit around and complain, and shut your mouth and be quiet, go off and do nothing. If you see a need, you can fill that void. You can fill that void. Uh, this is your second term, uh, how long you planning on staying?
Uh, probably till somebody defeats me. How about that?
Okay, okay.
How about that?
Okay, that sounds like a challenge, actually.
No, 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 no. The reason I ask is, when you have good politicians, you have to stay behind them. You have to encourage them to stay in office. If, if this man gets, gets, uh, that senior, that senior building built, cause it's been, it's been empty since I've been here, since before I got here.
Right.
If you get that done and you get some of these other things implemented, why would we, why change the formula if it ain't broken?
Like I said, if somebody defeats me, that mean they didn't want me there no more.
Yeah, well, 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 the people that defeat you aren't always looking out for the community. So, again, you know, we have to rally around our good politicians. We have to rally, and, and I call you a politician because you're into politics. You know, even though you're not, you know, you're a concerned citizen. And this is what we need more, we need people to be concerned. You know, just like he saw a need, you know, you see a need in these schools, you gotta go to the school board meetings. You gotta, you know, go to city, go to these commissioners meetings. You know, don't just talk about they're not doing anything if you don't see what they're doing. You know, cause, uh, I remember when the thing was going on with the affordable, uh, housing thing, and you was fighting that by yourself. You know, uh, you didn't back down, you didn't buckle, you know, uh, like I said, there are only two brown faces on that, uh, council. Uh, I believe, right, you and Janaski?
Correct.
Um, so, to be able to stand your ground in the face of what seems, uh, insurmountable opposition is, 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 is a, a, a real, uh.
What was the basis, what was the basis of that opposition?
Opposition regarding?
Uh, to affordable housing?
It wasn't so much that he's, he's talking, he's talking in the hopes of, uh, the Howard School project.
Right.
Uh, there was some complaints that it was the neighborhood that they were putting in there, like we're in New York, Harlem, Bronx, Crenshaw, somewhere else. I mean, you make the neighborhood. You are the neighborhood, so it's like. Okay? You know what I mean? So, it's like, we have a lot of people in, in that particular area that they've been culture conditioned. So, therefore, that means that they conditioned, they wanna stay where they at. So, therefore, why not put a senior housing right not far from their home at some better condition? You know what I'm saying? And then from hearing the cries, a lot of times people talk and they speak on things, though, until you have been exposed to the same information, education, at the end of the day, have been exposed to, you need to kind of slow your motor and speak on what you think you haven't seen and been to places that I've been. You know, and for me, you know, traveling up to the hill and talking with the senators and congressmen, and just seeing things around the nation, traveling around, and my research, you know, we had a project manager, all the information I gathered, that's the best place to put it. You know, and we can get into the psychological things and stuff about when you move a person and all that kind of stuff. So, now we have one here, cause you know the, where all the other senior housing located at, okay?
Yeah, yeah.
You hear what I'm saying? So, that's a long way from the house. And all we talk about, crowded by its transportation. Okay, so now, bam, right there.
Uh, and you also mentioned that, uh, you're looking to bring in more businesses.
Correct. Well, actually, I brought in a lot of business.
Okay, okay.
Also, uh, one business left, brought it back to the city, that was Wayne Farms, that's five hundred dollars. Uh, so, I mean, they, they left and they came back. We lobbied to get them back. I also, also I could put in, a lot of people don't know this, but I put in to spend my own money to have a job for at the citizens and adjust for, you know, Wayne Farms workers when they did the big layoff.
Uh, you know, um, I've seen a lot of industry try to come to Dope and it gets blocked because the wages are too high from, from the reports that I read. You know, uh, you had, uh, aviation company and possibly car companies that want to come to Dope. Uh, I, 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 it seems counter, kind of counterintuitive not to want your, your constituents or your citizens to have the highest wage possible, or the ability to make higher.
Well, at the end of the day, I mean, nobody can, can stop you from what you make. You can't find a job, you can create a job. So, I mean, you know, when you talking regarding the wage, you know, I've met them, the wage is what, seven twenty-five? Seven twenty-five, I mean, there's been other jobs that pay the problem that we have. I, I don't, I'm not certain about that, I don't wanna speak over, uh, I'm not sure about far, what you said, far bringing in far the wages, but I do know that, uh, it's finding, you know, people with those soft skills and the different lifestyles to work the job that we bring in, you know, the workforce. So, it's a lot of, of, of people here that are not work for a raise.
Okay, that being said, um, what happens to, cause Dope is, is pretty much the most major city in the southeast of Alabama. So, with that being said, how come there aren't any training programs other than maybe Wallace? You know, again, we're talking about transportation. You know, there, there used to be trade schools.
Right.
Uh, I know in Northview High, they do have some, some, uh, they do teach some trades.
They do teach it.
Yeah, right, so, what, 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 do you see that as part of the solution? Because a lot of funding has been cut to those type of programs. Cause even, even me, I grew up in New Jersey. When I was in high school, we had those type of programs, and they're all, they've been cut out. Do you see any possibility of, of training like that being expanded and brought into, to this area? Cause Dope in this moment, it really is a business.
Right.
It's, it's, you know.
Oh, yeah, we have what you call, some people call it the unemployment office, uh, it's Alabama Career Centers, I wanna say. It's located in my district, it's on the circle around the corner, the street, uh, catatonic on Wayne Farms.
Okay, yeah.
So, I mean, they have, they have, they have different, you have, uh, Works, My Red Works, I think Dean Nettley's over there, he serves, he works at the Chamber. Uh, there's another, I mean, I, I don't know, I have, I have a brain, but I'm sorry. But, uh, they have different things that they have out there, Wallace offers some different programs. That's why I say it's like, you know, there, there's a lot, there's a lot going on in Dope, there's a lot to be offered, but I think, like I said, a lot due to this culture condition, you gotta get out that box.
Right, right.
You know what I'm saying, you gotta get out that box. There's a lot, there's a lot to be offered, you know, uh, there, there are jobs, you know. A lot of people calling me about that, you know. Uh, I may have a caller too about, you know, somebody trying to pay the utility bill, but then when I call down there, they're a repeated offender. So, it's like, wow, you know.
Right, right. You don't want to put your neck on the line with somebody that's, uh, less than truthful. Um, you have anything for him, Antoine? I, you know, I, I'm just, I'm just so, like I said, I, I appreciate you so much, I really do. Uh, I've interviewed, I've had the pleasure or the privilege to interview quite a few politicians, uh, having, uh, ran. And you get a feel for people. You know, I call you a politician for lack of a better word, cause, cause you're not really. You know, politicians, you know, our government is set up of, for, and by the people. And you really seem to be of, for, and by the people. So, I want people to, I, I wanna encourage people, uh, in District One. Uh, give us a little overview of, of what District One entails, uh, you know, of what area District One.
Well, District One is the biggest district in the city. It covers up to the Dale County line and all the way around to the Henry County line. Uh, it covers, uh, a portion of downtown, some proportion of where the, the, the borderline of downtown coincides with the, the road that cut off this Adams Street, which goes, which runs right into, um, District Two, which is Janaski Fleming's district. Uh, I have the two largest public housing in my district. I have a lot of industrial in my district as well, out on, uh, Technological Drive. We have some, some big things going on out there, big tire company, uh, the big warehouse, you seen that? That's, that's jobs in my district. Uh, Wayne Farms, uh, my district go all the way up to Henry County line, loops all the way around, airport, that's in my district. Um, I have the resident, like, when I run, I have the resident with three pro bay office. So, I had to run around all the way up to, um, Ozark, that's where their pro bay is at. And I had to run to Henry County, which is David's bill, to register their pro bay. And then I had to come here to Houston County, uh, bill, administration bill to register that. So, uh, it, it's pretty, but you have a lot of ground to cover. Uh, I have some, 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 some poverty, uh, not extreme like, you know, but, you know, nothing that first can't get there. We got several programs, public housing's working on some things, they just bought some property. Uh, we get ready to revamp over there, you about to see some things coming up in the future with the public housing. Uh, you know, it's a lot of change about to take place, and you gonna see this, and it's not gonna be like five, ten years. This is gonna be like, like right now.
All right, all right, all right. Now, you're here in the first year. Now, you're in District One, I challenge you to go to your city council meeting. I challenge you to reach out to this man, to your commissioner, and give him a pat on the back when you see that senior center, senior center open up, when you see some of these things going on in District One, knowing that he is working hard for you. So, uh, again, you know, if you don't see a robbery, when it's time to reelect him, go out and support him as well. Because if, without your support, he can't continue to do the things that he does. So it's important to register to vote, and, and again, if the politician that's in office is doing his job, or her job, then you should, should support them, just as well, if they're not, you vote their behinds out and you run somebody for them. Uh, now, uh, like I said, uh, or like you said, you saw a need, you feel it, uh, how do you encourage our children to be more involved in, in local politics?
Well, at the end of the day, might get seen, might get do, you know what I'm saying, our kids are influenced by individuals that they don't get to hang out with. I mean, they, they listen to, you know, Boochman, Future, you know, Rich Homie, you know, uh, Camilla, whatever, all these different artists, they're not getting to hang out with them, so they're seeing them on TV and they're being influenced by them, but here I am. I'm, I'm here live in your face, so like I said, might get seen, might get do, but, uh, and, and that's what you got going on. You know, uh, you got a lot of people that's, and they, they talking about it, but they're not, they're not doing it. Like I said, my phone number is three three four six eight five nine three three two, that's my personal phone number.
Come on with it, that's right.
Two oh five doors, I mean, you can find me, I mean, I'm, I'm here. So it's not like I'm, I'm running, so it's like, that's, that's what our kids need, they need, they need, they need heroes that they, they, they can see, you know, live, you know, and see how they live and whatnot, that's like I told them, speaking at Gerard, you know, I don't have to do that, I'm not getting paid to do that. They, they need people that, that can tell a true story, I'm gonna talk about financial literacy, okay? And, 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 and tell them ways, you know, and what that can do for you, because a lot, in my, in my, early in my years, I made a lot of money, I was a disc jockey. I still do it on side occasionally, but it was like money management. And I think that's, that's, that's a part of my community, we have a lot of money coming through, but it's like managing that money, and that's why a lot of people are in the hole. But for our kids, just pretty much just keep being the man that I am, I have a son, that I, for first, first, I'm, I'm his first mentor, I'm his first Superman, I'm Spider Man, so I just live upright just for my son, because I tell him daily, Kevin, you know, we share the same first and last name. So I'm like, Kevin, don't you embarrass me, I'm not gonna embarrass you.
Right.
And that's the commitment and deal that me and my son made, and that's, and that's part of what's coming up with the dignity for dad, you know, to bring men out, there's a lot of broken men in my community.
Right.
And they can't stand tall, so that's, that's what I stand for, to give those men hope and whatnot, and also, I'm mentors and I inspire a lot of more men that they may not come up and tell me for pride and other personal issues, but I know I inspire them, they watch and they listen, so therefore, that's why I do what I do.
All right, and you, you heard a line from the voice's mouth. Uh, again, all, unless you're dead or incarcerated, you gotta do double duty. Uh, you can't just take care of your own, because all of these kids belong to us, uh, we're responsible for all of them. So, uh, unless you're dead and incarcerated, you don't get a pass, you gotta do double duty.
Right.
You gotta do double duty, because we're losing our children to a, a system that is set up for them to fail.
And, 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 and if you don't mind if I chime in, if I make, uh, in our state, you know, it is unlike other states, you have mental health, that's real big right now, mental health issue. So, we're getting rid, we're not building a mental health facility, we're building three new prisons. So, you don't, you don't build a house to be vacant, you don't buy a car to not be drove. So we have three new prisons, I mean, they're right over the wall, you know, and there's top, so I, I mean, I would not go there, but that's...
No, go there, go there, this is, this is, this is what we do, go there, let's talk about it.
So I mean, you, you just think about that, in Alabama, we're getting ready to build three new prisons, okay? That's what we're gonna put money in, and that's big.
On, on the hills of the DOJ reports, on the hills of misappropriation of, abuse of prisoners, they're gonna build three more. Wow.
Well, well, we gotta build, we was growing up because we was overcrowded in the house, y'all stop all that running, y'all stop all that talking a lot, but if the house is big enough, guess what? It's gonna have those problems occur, so therefore, they gonna be a bigger house, that's where they can lighten the load. So that report came out, you, you, so you have to, you have to look deeper, look with your third eye and listen with your third ear. Okay, those reports came out, the reason is like that, so now they gonna go back, why is it like this? So the rebuttal gonna be, we need each prison, so give us funding, so state will fund them even more.
As opposed, as opposed to, we need more jobs, we need mental health, and we need job training, as opposed to that? That would generate income, as opposed to...
Well, we'll, we'll get free labor though, we'll take that in state.
Yeah, yeah, I, I saw something in Arkansas that, that doing with the homeless, uh, they're paying the minimum wage to, you know, to pick up trash. Where in Alabama, they have to chain gangs, and do it for free.
That's why it's important to vote, we got about, what, twenty-two candidates, right now, the Democrats are weak. So if we don't watch out, guess who's gonna be president? Make America Great Again, right?
Right, you absolutely right.
We're bad week right now.
You're absolutely right.
Come on now.
Spread too thin, and that's how we got in the same.
Right.
Spread too thin, and the crazy horse got to, woo, oh, have mercy. All right, we're gonna take a little break right here, uh, we're gonna come back live, again, you're watching and listening to Real Talk Rehearsal with Commissioner Kevin Dorsey of District One in Dorton, Alabama.
Play music, dude. Play club music. They're doing a roof on the house too, I guess they was. They don't stop, they had to stop.
What have you been on, since February?
Yeah.
Sitting right now?
No, that's my part, right there.
You gotta come on with it, man.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not in the house conducting the interview, I'm not in the house conducting the interview.
Okay, you gotta come on, you gotta help it, man.
Trust me, that's, that's research.
Come on with it, man.
Yeah, we, uh, yeah, we, we, we've only been on since February, man, and we got a few hundred followers, and we got a big following, you know, and, uh, you know, the, the radio show, we go out on Facebook, you know, because this can be replicated, and we're just trying to get, my folks gotta stand up.
Yeah, they make, they make it up. They make it up, what they say, the Bible that, you know, the church is going to hear them up, my people praying for what? Acting out, yeah, they, you just don't know, there's something that holds it.
Uh, fifty-two?
Something thirty, thirty, but you know, none, the eyes could have been a little, you get one where?
Oh, yeah, the money I went to, it wasn't totally wasted, like, yeah, I don't have, I don't have much.
Much of the night, yeah. I'm enjoying life, man, I don't have much.
Yeah.
I said, just a man to beat, me, me, I, I said, huh, beat. That's right, that means it's over, right?
Yeah, well, we just don't need to walk to, you know how it do, just put up somebody, you know, do.
I'm gonna fight to the end, I ain't gonna just give up and pull the plug, but, like, you know, I'm gonna keep serving, this stuff going on now, I'm gonna blow up. It'll blow up, because I'm doing what I'm supposed to do.
Right, right.
And that's a part-time job, people get that, have a part-time job.
Yeah, yeah.
That's what, that's what city commissioners, part-time job, they pay six hundred twenty-seven dollars every two weeks. That's it.
Well, maybe when you step down, maybe I don't know, by then I have a, you know, because you gotta keep good people, eh, you gotta keep good people.
Yeah, like, like, the thing is, man, you know, the older you get, the less pressure you need, you don't have to be in a seat to make it happen, for me, but I...
Yeah, I believe.
You get out in people, there's people who, who, they're not in office, they have even more, that's why I was telling him, you're a citizen, you're a tax payer. So you can raise hell about this and that, you don't have to worry about nobody's, your name, you just go home and, ha, 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 I raise it, go back to the house, tax payer.
Make sure of getting...
Who is right here, I got a watch, I don't feel it, what's your name? Destiny, okay, dead ass wife, I ain't know you, don't gotta hit me with that.
We, we got the same deal, don't embarrass me, I learn from you.
Got your daughter?
Mm-hmm, at the last of them all, he...
Let's see what you up to. No, I'm great. Mike Gray, your friend, you got a minute? You got a minute? Go on to the...
You wanna go, you...
No, okay, yeah, right, Mike Gray. I don't, uh, TP tech, you know what that is?
We're talking about TP's all the time.
Yeah, who are that people right there walking by? Y'all know one, who are they? That's who trained me in the room right now.
That's it?
Hey, that's who trained me. This, this is a plaque of legal law, where they kill them. That's who showed matter to all this.
This the one, this is why I got a show, that's right there.
He came in here, do a live show, white, you know, for a package, you take yours, you hold it.
When is this?
Yeah, that's what they end up there.
You're in the dark, man. That's when I learned how to do my voice.
Right.
Looking just like, like, you know? I guess it's chicken, I said, hey, gee, boy, why that, they, 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 yeah. I learned that from him, why the hell, I'm like, man, I wish I could do that.
Yeah, yeah.
We be talking about Eddie, that don't get away. But he just, you know?
He just goes into it.
Yeah, he didn't know it, but it always does, you know, second nature. I did pull my thought out too.
Yeah?
I got a rainbow coming up, baby.
It's gonna be like this all day, tomorrow, they, they got that pipe up, they moved it, so, it still, should be ready for that slab, hopefully next week.
Over there? I think y'all could have got away with, uh... Y'all in the same room?
We're talking about it, like, you put the screws up in, uh...
No, I'm talking about y'all, you have two shirts for one thing, oh, and guess what?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. They, they, they ain't bad now, up to, up to now, let's see, me, they...
They ain't, no, they ain't. How many y'all take it on one shirt? Take them out. Take them out, and you got enough people coming, everybody ain't wanting people.
Yeah. Well, they do, they, they do, after no search, other church.
We do that, you'd be out by twelve, uh, one at San and one at, at Bourbon. Bourbon you do, two strong, the second you do all your stuff, pray the word, Bourbon, you just do pretty much the prayer, follow the script, all the, free, run on. And you're pulling out some more people, there's some people that's more people, wanna get it out the way.
Yeah.
If you live in that kind of world where everything is like, not cooking, or you don't come out, you don't want to send dollars, you ain't go to church, and they don't have none.
Yeah.
You don't want to serve, go home, ready, eat, I'll meet y'all there. All right, you're listening to Real Talk Rehearsal, live WKCG ninety-nine, point one on your FM dial. The spot to be, Dorton, Alabama, now, the views expressed on today's show are those of me and my in-studio guests, as well as Antma, my partner here, uh, and do not necessarily reflect the views of WKCG or Topps. Now that we got that out the way, let's get on back to it, I don't wanna keep you too much longer, uh, Commissioner, you know, uh, I know it's raining, so we ain't barbecuing. Uh, not till later on at least, uh, what else did you have for, uh, the people of Dorton? You know, inside and outside the district, any words of wisdom?
Just stay, you know, stay woke, stay woke, I mean, keep your eyes open, um, you know, don't, don't, don't just, you know, get, get, go off facts, don't go off of, you know, he say, she say, and read your paper every day, and read your paper every day, watch your news, you know what I'm saying? Gather, gather, gather the stars, uh, you know, and, and, and watch for your leadership, voting's gonna come up again for the presidential election, just watch how that's going. Listen to them, you know, lis, listen to all of the, uh, the promises and all that good stuff, listen to their platform, that's what you're listening for, listen to their, for their platform, uh, that's just like local here, you know, what, what can benefit you? Because a lot of times, when you talk to people, they, they, they thinking like, what benefits me? I know that's benefiting you, but how does that benefit me? You know, just think in another way like that, you know what I'm saying, I just ask people to think, you know, think twice, there was a song I like, a good bit, and he says, think twice. Think twice before you answer, you know, just, just think about it, and, uh, if we get that, I think our community will be a far better place, uh, and do things that matter. Does, does, does it really matter, you know, uh, just think about it, I mean, I said, I don't have a... No, you know, magic one and nothing, no, no, uh, magic formula and nothing, just, I just serve, I serve, I serve with integrity, and I'm just, I'm just a man trying to take care of his family, man.
All right, and again, we can't ask much more than that of anyone, so, so again, you know, uh, we have an open invite, we have an open invite. Those come down anytime, you have issues, you wanna get out there, you need help, you need people to, to pack out or commission me, you let us know, and we'll do everything we can to get that place knocked down, all right, uh, and again, everybody needs to go out and register to vote, don't wait for election time. Monday morning, go down and register to vote, this way you know that you're on the road, make sure you haven't been blocked, because again, we can't, we can't continue the same cycle. We wait till election time to wanna register to vote, then it's too late.
Right.
Or we wanna wait till election time to talk to these politicians, or these representatives of the people, if they won't talk to you now, don't vote for them later. So, so again, I'm reaching out, I'm gonna be reaching out to the rest of the commissioners, uh, it doesn't matter what side of the highway they're representatives, so we're gonna reach out to all of them. Uh, the mayor as well, uh, police chief, or, uh, I'm gonna reach out to him as well, maybe with your help, and get him on, uh, because again, if we don't talk, you can't understand me and I can't understand you.
Exactly.
Uh, you know, I, I believe in trying to do things diplomatically whenever possible, whenever possible, sometimes it ain't possible, then you have to do other things, but I should always try to resolve things in a diplomatic and, and respectable manner first, before you take to, uh, other actions. Uh, because you never know what's in another man's heart, uh, maybe he just, like I said, maybe he's just ignorant to your situation, or you're ignorant to his situation, you don't really have an understanding.
Right.
And, uh, and without that dialogue, you can't bridge those gaps, so, uh, again, I thank you, uh, for coming out today, Commissioner Dorsey. Uh, and again, this won't be the last time I'm, uh, get out and vote, uh, talk to Commissioner Dorsey, he gave you his number, this will be up on YouTube, so if you missed his number, it'll be up there, because he gonna say it over and over again when you press play.
Right, you can't scramble eggs.
Right? Real representative looks like, looks like, uh, this is what we talk about when we talk about, uh, political engagement, this is what it looks like. This is what political engagement looks like, you see a need and you address the need, you know, and you stay connected with the people that you represent. Uh, you can't ask any more than that, man, so again, don't sit on... DJ, uh, amongst other things in the community, a business owner, so again, if he can, 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 anybody can do it. Uh, and before you go, uh, you may have mentioned earlier that you speaking at Gerard, I see that you teach life...
Time, my own business.
Okay.
Full-time business, man.
Okay. Okay, but, but you did teach life skills.
I did.
Okay, so that means he still has the capability.
That's my skin in the game.
That's your skin in the game, so some of you teenagers, you know what he looked like, you see his face, asking some questions, you know? You, you need a, a male figure or some, some advice, you know what I look like, you know what he looks like, this is what we're here for.